Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 18th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on Greater Dubuque Development Corporation.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for August 18th, 2025. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is Greater Dubuque Development Corporation's Quarterly Update. I will turn it over to their President and CEO, Rick Dickinson.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, City Manager Mike Van Milligan, and most talented staff of the city. My name is Rick Dickinson. I have the pleasure of being here as President of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. I reside at 205 Hill Street here in Dubuque. Our task this evening in this work session is to provide our quarterly report to the Mayor, Council, City Administration staff, and most importantly, the citizens of Dubuque as to our activities in the last three months. We are putting about 10 pounds of information in a five-pound bag, so I'm going to be fairly quick here. First, I'm going to present our annual report, which I placed in front of you. I would also share with citizens of Dubuque, you can receive a copy of our 2024-25 Annual Report at greaterdubuque.org, along with previous annual reports as you see fit. And the information I provide here, most of it, is available on access to Dubuque, at the greaterdubuque.org site. The theme for our annual report was "Driven by Purpose, Powered by Partnership," discussing what is the secret sauce of our organization and of our community and of our region, and that is we respect each other, civility rules the day, and we partner to achieve the outcomes that have been identified through data collection and research. It's not shoot at anything that flies, claim anything that falls, but actually think about what we need to do as a community. And this annual report summarizes the activities that we completed in the last year. We also did a planning session in January that the Mayor, City Manager, members of the Council participated in, and this was to bring us through to 2030, talking about the initiatives we should be involved in. And it was a learning session, a planning session, that was facilitated by Northeast Iowa, University of Northern Iowa Institute for Decision-Making, which facilitated the meeting. We focused on what our region was, and that is certainly the MSA of Dubuque, Dubuque County, all adjoining counties in Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin. We don't manage, we don't rule, we are there and available to help our neighboring counties in any way we can, whatever we have is theirs for the asking. Our mission is to serve as the premier economic development group in our region and to facilitate growth in jobs, recruitment of employment, and workforce growth in particular. Our vision is to strive to make 2025 through 2030 an unprecedented period of growth in our region. And we have four basic missions of that, and that includes business support and attraction, population growth, regional collaboration, and organizational excellence. I'm going to quickly go through our goals for the last five-year capital campaign, which is "You Can Be Great Here." We're entering the fourth of those five years. Job growth, we have a goal of reaching 64,000, we're at 61,000, seem to be stuck on that number, so that's a real stretch goal for our community. Increase population to 105,000, I believe, right now, we're at around 100,000, so we have ways to go there as well. As it relates to creating a billion dollars in commercial and residential construction, we're far ahead of goal there, at nearly $900 million with two years to go in the five-year capital campaign, and the goal was $1 billion. We're about 100 bucks away from our goal of 76,000 median household income, we're very proud of that, and it is exceeding the performance of many of our competitive communities in the Midwest. We'll be at in excess of 76,000 when the next data is available to us, and I'm also proud of the fact that we've begun to reduce poverty in our community. Our goal is to reduce it 5% from its point at 2021. Building Bright Futures Through Childcare. It was a major accomplishment in the last year. We have a number of new facilities constructed in our market. If you recall, three and four years ago, we said we had a dearth of available slots in our community, in particular for infant slots, a 24-month wait period for an infant slot in childcare, which if you do the math, doesn't work very well. So we developed a strategy countywide with significant support from the public sector and the private sector, created new childcare facilities focused on infant care, recognized internationally by the International Economic Development Council as being a model for other communities across the world as to how to focus on childcare, and there's more of that available in the report. Also, we established Business Champions for Childcare. Already, we've distributed over $1 million to over 20 different childcare facilities in Dubuque County, funded by the employers you see here with a foundational commitment by John Deere Foundation of $600,000 in a three-year program, and more to come with more employers to participate in that, and as an employer, the City of Dubuque is participating as well, and we thank you for that. Driving Housing Solutions. We did a study three years ago that we needed additional housing in the Greater Dubuque area, and guess what? The city changed its parameters on how to incent housing, and already we have about 2,000 units in some stage of development. Just received an email from Matt Mulligan at The Farm Development, they're now on their seventh house under construction on their first phase. We're making real progress in housing thanks to the collaboration that we've experienced. Acceleration in Broadband. I can't tell you today, but by Thursday, there's going to be a major announcement, or international recognition of the collaboration between the City of Dubuque, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and the private sector, making sure that there's universal broadband available in our community, and I think you'll be reading more about that Thursday and hearing about that in the media at the end of the week, and we're very proud of that, thanks to your support. We've had a number of projects grow in the market in the last year, and please tell me when I'm getting close to 10 minutes, because I don't want to blow things away here. We've had a number of projects, including Universal Tank, new facilities under construction, expanding their operation. We've had seven new projects, including that project FEH Downtown with their new office complex off of Eighth Street. We have Vanguard, expanding, doubling the size of their facility at the Dubuque Industrial Center West. PTS Services, the physical therapy solutions near the Locust Street Hy-Vee is another new project in downtown Dubuque. Pathways to Opportunity, we're going to save this for Nick, he's going to talk about the tremendous success of our job training program, Opportunity Dubuque, and some of the statistics that you'll be very proud of. Our rapid response has reached out to those employers that have laid off, making sure they're aware of the jobs in the Dubuque market, using accessdubujobs.com, our partnership with Telegraph Herald, to make sure that those folks know about the opportunities that exist in Dubuque, and we go out and meet them where they live. So we just don't send an email, we actually physically sit down with them and introduce them the opportunities that exist in our market. College Connections, reaching out to students to make sure that we do everything we can to show the love so that those graduates can become part of our workforce, part of our population growth. We've had over 1,140 students this year alone participate in programs from hockey night to movie night and other programs that will be available in the coming year, to make sure we get them off campus and see the opportunities that exist for them in Dubuque. We also have an internship program where we reach out to interns, over 784 interns have been part of that program in the last year since 2019's beginning. Thirty-two unique employers are participating in that program, so the interns are there for the summer, meet each other, find out what opportunities there are in Dubuque, and it's a great program. We're celebrating the 60th class of Distinctively Dubuque. We've welcomed over 1,400 folks, introducing them to other newcomers. They acclaim it, in fact, they want to have an alumni association of Distinctively Dubuque. The Mayor, the City Manager, a number of you have participated in those classes over the years, and it's a tremendous asset that just doesn't happen in other communities. We received the Excellence in Economic Development Award, which I mentioned earlier, from IEDC, that's for the excellence in childcare. We are in the top 20 cities for new college graduates, that's from Checker, a human resources software firm, and I think most of us have seen the Wall Street Journal article, which simply titled "The Place to Be This Summer," where someone left Dubuque in the 1980s when it was a place to leave. His sister came here for some function, she told him about the phenomenal change that's taken place in Dubuque. He came here and he wrote that tremendous article in the Wall Street Journal about all that is right in this community that has done so much. We'd like to thank our investors in Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, also our investors in Workforce Solutions and accessdubujobs.com. And I have a little something special to show you, that we closed out our meeting this summer, our annual meeting. We're also closing out our 40th anniversary, as you know. Greater Dubuque Development was started in 1984, the fall of 1984, and so this is our first year of the next 40 years. And as we proceed, I'd like to show you a little video that we showed at our annual meeting, so if you would shoot that, please.
Dubuque is a great community to be in. As the DRA is celebrating their 40th year, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation is also celebrating their 40th year, quite the milestone for two organizations that have had such an impact in the tri-state community.
Communities like Dubuque are built on partnerships. You can't do the things that we do without working together. There's no one entity that can get any of these big projects, these big complicated things done, on their own. It has to be us working together to be able to do it.
I've always appreciated the fact that Greater Dubuque believes that the client drives the process.
Greater Dubuque Development brings its knowledge from the business community to the table at each and every meeting, and that really drives which of those needs the Dubuque Initiative's nonprofit can tackle.
Well, Dubuque County does not have an economic development division, so we've partnered with Greater Dubuque Development as our economic driver. Just a lot of great projects going on where all these partnerships really move things forward.
We have a very comprehensive approach to talent retention and development in our community, and I believe that's a result of strong partnerships, especially with Greater Dubuque Development Corporation.
They bring us to the table, along with the other utilities, to understand the needs of the community. When they know that a new business is coming to town, they make sure that we're aware so that we can do some of our long-range planning.
Greater Dubuque Development does such a wonderful job of working with businesses, whether they're large or small, in our community, and helping businesses to identify what they need, and then our role as their partners, then to help implement.
Our partnership with Greater Dubuque has not only been essential to our success, it's been transformational. We want all of our citizens to thrive, and we know that we need to work together to make that happen.
What we're finding is a lot of students today don't even understand what the job titles are that they're applying for, so if we can help connect those dots for our students by saying, hey, the certificate program that is supported by Opportunity Dubuque, these are the 10 employers that understand and value the training that you're going through, and those are things that we're really trying to evolve and make our partnerships with employers a little more robust.
As we look to the future, population growth, along with attracting and recruiting a qualified workforce is absolutely fundamental. Greater Dubuque, along with our organization and many, many other organizations in this community, understand that and are really laser-focused on making that happen.
We don't let really big goals or really big dreams that people say can't be done stop us. We dream, we go for it, and we make it happen.
Economic development doesn't have boundaries. We're definitely stronger together. We're always stronger together.
Whether it are into the city of Dubuque, Dubuque County, or even Delaware County, doesn't really make any difference, it all benefits everybody.
So by working together, we don't duplicate our efforts, and we can create much more stronger partnerships and outcomes.
I think the success in the last 20 years, 30 years in Dubuque is solely dependent on those partnerships.
Greater Dubuque Development Corporation has been a part of almost every story that Dubuque has written in the past few decades.
All of that is made possible by the continued support, the Mayor and Council, our investors in the private sector, other public sector investors and nonprofits. It is teamwork. Without hesitation, I tell you and I tell the citizens of Dubuque, we have the finest economic development team in the country, and it's my pleasure to introduce one of those to you today, who is our Director of Workforce Programming, who's going to talk about workforce landscape, Nick Hockenberry. Come on up, Nick.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and our city staff as well. As Rick said, I'm going to do a brief overview, and I'm going to stick to the script because I can go long and your time is valuable here, on our workforce landscape, but importantly, how we build out our understanding of that landscape to design initiatives to really implement workforce solutions in the community. So we'll start with our region. So Dubuque, Dubuque County, Dubuque MSA remains at the center of our region with the six adjacent counties, including Grant County and Joe Davies County in our neighboring states. We define our region this way, not just arbitrarily. What you're looking at here is actually a map of the ZIP codes of workers' residences and those workers that are working at employers that are housed within the city of Dubuque. So it really is a reflection, the region that we draw here and where we define our service area is responsive to the way that our economy works, in particular with our workforce. I want to also point out, before I move on to the skills gap, also point out that a couple of other statistics related to this region, you know, Joe Davies County, every day, the working age population there, 24.6% of them come into Dubuque County to work. It's 14.6% for Delaware County, it's 21.4% in Jackson County. So the reality of the interchange of commerce and workforce is there for the city of Dubuque, Dubuque MSA, and our region. This is all important context as we build out our understanding of the workforce landscape here, and one of our two pillars of data that we really use to fill in a fuller relief of that picture is our skills gap analysis. This is done in partnership with Northeast Iowa Community College on an annual basis, and it really is an assessment of the skilled workforce pipeline for Dubuque County and our region at large. Part of that overview is a look at our past, as well as a projection into the history. And so what you're seeing here is the relationship between working age population, and that is those between 15 years old, all the way up to 69 years old, and jobs in our region. And you'll see here, we take a 10-year look back at history as well as project into the future. And for our region, which is being reflected in front of you here, we see a slight increase in job growth over the next 10 years, over 3%, but a decrease in working age population. But as we zoom in to Dubuque County and the Dubuque MSA, it's a healthier projection for the future, so we see employment growth at over 4.1%, as well as working age population growth of 2.3%. Dubuque MSA is truly the center of this region and is the economic hub. Dubuque County, over that 10-year period when we're looking at 2014 to 2024, added 1,089 new jobs. That's compared to the region as a whole, that only had a net of 298. So what we're seeing is regional contraction, and that Dubuque is an even more important factor in the economic health of our region here. This is what it looked like four years ago, just four years ago. My first work on the skills gap analysis showed this interesting interplay between job growth and working age population, looking forward at an intersection of those two lines, which could never come to pass. As our working age population goes down, that negatively impacts economic growth with our employers. The good news is that things have changed, but the fear in the future is that slowing population growth will begin to negatively impact the potential economic growth of our employers in the region. There's only so much in community that we can hope for. Diving further into the skills gap analysis, we take a look at our major industries and our top industries by employment. So you'll see healthcare and manufacturing are our top industries in this market and have a healthy projected growth rate for the next 10 years. At the heart of the skills gap analysis is really looking at the top 20 skills gaps, but let me define a skills gap here, and that is occupation where demand outpaces completion in associated skills development programs. So that's certificates, that's degrees or diplomas. The gap highlights where we anticipate the struggles for employers to find those critical roles for their productivity. The thrust of the report, I'll just highlight some three takeaways here, and it is that middle-skill jobs, those requiring that certificate, diploma, or degree, remain our greatest skills gaps. There are shortages that touch every industry, and higher ed remains a massive recruitment asset for our region. I'm going to touch briefly on one other data set that we feel is an important part of that pillar of our workforce landscape understanding, and that is the labor shed analysis. This is done in partnership with Iowa Workforce Development and their Labor Market Division. This was released in 2024, and it's a ton of rich information, not only on our labor force and the availability, but also the priorities of that population, that labor force population, because it is a survey where they talk to folks who work in our region. I'll point out just a few takeaways here. The first is right on the cover there, it is that over 39,000 individuals within the region shown on that screen would be likely to accept employment in employers within the city of Dubuque. So folks within that region who do not currently work at an employer within the city of Dubuque, there is a pool of 39,000 folks who would consider changing their commute patterns and coming to those employers. A couple of other things is just that the average wages that they're looking for, related to the industry, when those folks were surveyed, are not outsized from what our employers are currently offering, as well as the desired benefits that they would like to see in an employer and consider taking employment within an employer in the city of Dubuque. So owing to this understanding of our workforce landscape, our strategy is structured around, really, six areas. Each one addresses a recurring challenge we've identified across employers and workforce segments. And so I'll probably only touch on a couple of them here in brief before we offer any questions, answer any questions from all of you, but Opportunity Dubuque, and I'll touch more on that in just a second, worker training of our existing workforce that's tied to employers in the area, transportation remains an opportunity for us, childcare, as Rick mentioned just previously, higher ed engagement, and of course, layoff and closer outreach, really fast response in those economic shocks. So I'll touch on a couple here, and this really gets home to, you know, our message on the importance of partnerships. The Northeast Iowa Workforce Development Board, of which I serve on the board, has helped design a program called the Incumbent Worker Training Program, and it's a matching grant for employers to say, we understand that retention and skills development is an important mission for you now, especially now, as recruitment and attraction efforts are slowing down, in some cases, and employment growth, in some cases, is slowing down in certain industries. How can we still incentivize productivity and worker development? And this is one way that we've helped design a program that takes federal workforce dollars and partners with employers. Another one is related to the transportation barriers that many have to employment, and understanding where our employment centers are are not always reflective of where the people who can best take advantage of that opportunity are. So we've worked closely with the RTA, who has an innovative pilot, partnering with employers to set up a van pool program to bring workers where their opportunity is and eliminate that barrier of transportation to getting their foot in the door and developing a career. And the last piece I'll touch on here is Opportunity Dubuque. This is a longstanding partnership that has run in some form since 2011, and we've had great progress in iterating this program to be responsive to employers' needs. And I'll just highlight some of our takeaways from this past fiscal year. So we had over 270 enrollees in programs, and these are programs that are tied to high-demand positions, that those skills can be developed in a short-term certificate training program in partnership with Northeast Iowa Community College. We had over 170 completions, and at the time of the reporting period, we had about 82 students still in training at that time. One of the important pieces that we highlight is the follow-up with graduates, and ensuring that this certificate helped them find employment or continue their education journey in their field of study. And we have a 94% completion rate for folks who are either finding employment in their field or continuing their course of study, which is lauded across the country as something that you would aspire to as far as a program of this ilk. And I will point out that Dubuque Works, which is a partnership with workforce development, public and private sector, and nonprofits, which helps support this program, as well as the city of Dubuque, Dubuque County, and the DRA, who helped fund the tuition supports, we funded directly 45 individuals who didn't qualify for any other sort of scholarship opportunities, whether it be from the state or other funding sources.
Yes, let me just wrap up here. Over the last, since 2011, we have had 38, just under 3,900 individuals complete Opportunity Dubuque certificates, and we truly believe this is where we've helped make a connection between the opportunity and the want and need of the population to find that opportunity in our community. And as Rick pointed out, we will move on to questions.
All right. Well, Nick, thank you very much. It's great information, and Rick, you as well. We do have time for one very brief question, if anyone has one. Mr. Resnick?
Well, I have a question, and I'll be, I'll talk quickly. So I've been very impressed with your group and your board, you know, with Bright Minds Business Champions, Housing Initiatives, Broadband, Central Avenue Improvement. You just jump in there and get things moving, and oftentimes, they get things done. My question to you is, higher learning institutions are beginning again, very important. I used to say that, you know, so go the colleges, so goes Dubuque, you know, they're very important. What can Dubuque citizens do to help support these people who come in and go to Loris and UD and Clark and other places? I always thought, you know, if they were to pick a team and go and see some sporting activities, go to concerts, go to events, what can Dubuque citizens do to help these colleges thrive?
I believe the answer to that question is to do what we do well, and that is welcome them, make them feel part of the community, invite them off of campus, go on campus, and introduce ourselves to them. At the next presentation, I'll be showing you a video of the Mayor welcoming college students, being sent to every single college student that's enrolled in higher education in our market, and it's not old Rick in a gray beard saying, "Welcome Dubuque," it's the Mayor with a sense of humor that understands what students expect and enjoy, and inviting to a community that truly understands the value of higher education in its midst.
Well, thank you for all you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Give me a little more credit than I do. Give me a little more credit than I'm due there, Rick, but I appreciate that.
I've seen the video. You haven't.
Yeah, well, I do have some gray hair in my beard. So, well, thank you very much for this presentation. We always appreciate when you're able to join us and give us this great information. So looking forward to seeing you again. That will be all the business we have in the work session, so we'll be adjourned for about 30 seconds or so.